Yeah.
You're nice still, so.
I found out what else.
Alright, so the video is on.
Alright.
I know.
Get your recliner.
So we are recording now, just so y'all know. Thank you. Alright, six o'clock on the dot. Good evening, we'd like to welcome everybody to the Holbrook City Council, regular city council meeting for July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four at six P M. All, everybody's in attendance except for Councilwoman Pacheco and she is excused for the evening. We'll go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Tafoya, followed by an invocation by Vice Mayor Nielsen, if you can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, as we're assembled here, on behalf of the citizens of Holbrook, please bless us with thy spirit that we can do what's best on their behalf. Bless us that we will avoid contention and that we will seek to bless the poorest among us and bless those that are searching and looking into investing in our community. And we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Item number four consent agenda of the July tenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Everybody's had a chance to read through them.
I want to be.
Were there any edits, concerns? Hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I move that we approve the, the minutes of July tenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Alright, we have a first and Councilman Dixon has a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, call to the public for non-agenda items.
There are none.
Item number six, call to the public for agenda items.
There are none either.
Okay. Right, item number seven, new business. Um, we'll start with the presentation from our Holbrook Volunteer Fire Department, our annual report by Chief Baker. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, good to be here. Um, been a while since I gave a report, so we'll try to keep this brief, but try to cover as much information as I can. Um, right now, Holbrook Volunteer Fire Department, we're standing with twenty members, twenty active members. Um, we're typically staffed up to thirty, but twenty is where we're at right now, so, so we're always looking for new members. Um, right now, I, I don't know if you all know, but we have three fire stations. Station one on McCaws Road, station two at the P D, station three up on the hill. That long touch training facility is also up at one hundred Airport Road. We have four engines, um, right now, uh, ninety-two, uh, nineteen ninety-two Pierce, nineteen ninety-seven Pierce, a two thousand and two Pierce and a two thousand and twelve, uh, two, excuse me, two thousand and thirteen Covet. Can't work. Um, we have a reserve engine which we don't wanna use, it's a nineteen seventy-one Van Pelt, so that's for emergency use only. Uh, we have a rescue truck which is very new, it's two years old, we bought that a couple of years ago. Um, calls this year, we've, um, responded to twenty-four, twenty-five calls this year. Though, you know, our numbers are down over the years, which is a good thing. Twenty twenty-two, we had ninety-seven responses, twenty twenty-three, we had fifty-eight. So, year-to-date, we've gone to twenty-two, so, and we've had some since then. Uh, no structure fires in the last two years, which is a good thing. Uh, the last one we had was the motel. Um, starting, uh, most of our calls are brush fires, rescues out on the freeway, those types of things. Other than that, that, that's brings you up to date, kind of where we're at, and we've got a few projects going this year that we're trying to push through, we're looking, or I'm looking into purchasing and installing iPads in our vehicles just to get us caught up to date technology-wise with everybody else. Right now, we're just using a lot of paper and notebooks and stuff like that. So this, that would be a minimal cost, it's, we could cover another bunch of stuff, but, um, we're, we're just looking at programs and stuff that'll make it be the right fit for our department. There's a lot of stuff out there for big, large departments that cost a lot of money, but we're looking something that'll, that'll work for us. That's kind of what the main focus for our projects this year. Um, other than that, if you have any questions, I'm open to any questions, so.
Then we probably have a few, if there's any questions.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the excellent fireworks display and the wonderful barbecue held on the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
And also for saving our community millions of dollars being a volunteer fire department while you keep our insurance rates low.
We, we try. Um, fireworks and, and the barbecue are fun to do. The biggest issue we have with fireworks this year is general public. But, there, some of those personal fireworks, they're, they're getting out of hand. I don't know, I don't know a way to stop it. Fire Marshal commented on it, 'cause he was there inspecting us this year. So, he, he did make a comment that that's out of hand, and I said, wow, I don't, I don't know how to, how to do that, how to control that, so.
So.
But, we did have a couple instances out in the, out in the viewing area where, you know, people got hurt and we had a couple of brush fires out there, so I don't know how to, how to control that, you know, 'cause there, people are scattered all over out there. So that's just something we're gonna have to think about next year.
Yeah, Councilman, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I can say Councilman Dixon has a question or comment.
So the people that got hurt, the brush fires out there, was that from personal fireworks?
Yes.
Okay, and are they, are they igniting illegal fireworks?
Uh, I would say there's a little bit of everything out there, legal and illegal.
Okay.
So.
And around town, I know bomb rockets are illegal still, correct?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, that's just part of the Fourth of July, you know, it's just, this year was a lot
Okay.
prevalent than other years, so.
And that may be just an educational thing for the public to, to, for them to understand that a lot of fireworks are still illegal in the state of Arizona. Um, some are not, but
Right.
there's just a few.
And, and, and you're right, maybe, we put it in our, we take notes every year of what we need to do, what we don't need to do, what we can improve on. So I'll, I'll put that in the packet for next year, put a public information
Okay.
bulletin in the paper and then other avenues to put that out there.
And as far as any illegal fireworks, that's an enforcement thing that, that Nathan can address.
I, I think them in con- in conjunction with the, uh, county, that, it's just, it's hard because they're all over this town, right? And it's everywhere, it's, if there was, so I don't know, it's, and it's hard to chase them down because they light them off and then they're gone, right? So, out there it's probably easier because everybody's kind of packed around, you know who's out there, but see who's doing it.
Yeah.
But, I don't, I, I think it's always been an issue, it probably always will be an issue, but it was a lot worse this year.
Like you said, we can work with administration to try to mitigate some of those and help with the, you know, the getting the word out, so.
Yep.
Perfect.
That would help.
Is there any other questions or comments for Chief?
I, I got some for you, I know we have a new fire truck in our budget. But I'm asking you, do we have the capabilities now to do something with La Quinta? Because I don't, I mean, that takes a ladder truck, right?
Possibly, depending on what it is. Um, we have capabilities to get to the, the top story windows, yes. Um, La Quinta is, is probably one of the buildings I'm least worried about, yeah, is it gonna be a problem if it catches fire? Yes, but it's modern construction, sprinkler, fire department riders on every level. So, as far as fire protection, it's probably the most prepared building in the city.
But doesn't their insurance rates depend on having a fire department that can control something if something gets out of hand?
That's, that's part of it, part of the I S O rating, yes, but our trucks are equipped with, you know, monitors to shoot water that far. So, that, that's part of the, the survey that they do, we just had one twenty twenty-three, I think it was, I don't know if you got updated on the survey, that we just had I S O do our survey in twenty twenty-three. So, and that, La Quinta was part of that survey. Um, so our I S O rating is a five, before that, it was a five after that. We're a few points away of being a four. There's a few things that we're trying to do, as part of that's training, part of that's response times, stuff like that, personnel. But yeah, I mean, it, it's a concern, but it's probably not my biggest concern right now.
So, I, I'm reading on here that, uh, the nineteen ninety-two, that's station two, which is over here, right? It has a water leak due to rusted fittings and barely passing pump test. I don't know how you guys do it, Alex, but I know when I go with the emergency response team out to paper mill. Our fire truck, we exercised every month because, and, and we had a pumper like that, but if you don't exercise and the springs and everything, they get loose and then it won't hold water, is that's what's happening here?
That's, no, ours is just old, Mrs. Rust, yeah, we have monthly company meetings and, and part of our protocol on our monthly company meetings is to run the trucks, operate every valve, make sure everything's working. So that happens once a month, at least once a month. Um, this truck's just old, I mean, it was just, uh, galvanized fitting on the top of the pump that rusted out. So, and right now it passes the pump test, but it's struggling, I mean, um, and part of this I S O rating is to see how well our pumps, our trucks pump. So, this ninety-two, we just got back from the shop, 'cause it, it's just, it's struggling. The RPMs are way, way high, when it's getting to the pressures and the gallons per minute, it needs to pump to pass test. And so, you know, it, it's a thirty-year-old truck, it's just old.
I, I see down here you have financial implications, cost of purchase, five seventy-one, what's, what's that? Is, is that saying if you went out to get a new fire truck, that's what you're looking at, or am I not reading this right?
That's just the price of the truck.
That's the next item. It is the next item, however
Yeah. We can go.
It kind of relates, we can do it now, I
Yeah, it's up to you.
I feel comfortable answering some of these, as long as we don't get into the, uh, Councilman Black trying to go in too much to the next item, will be the actual purchase of it. So any questions that's pertaining to the fire department that he can answer? Now, as long as it's relevant.
Yeah, whatever. So, yeah, that's the price of the truck, five seventy-one's the price of the truck.
So we'll have a chance at it again, but this is the presentation and then we'll grill down the numbers in a minute. Do you have any other questions about the department itself?
No.
Alright, with that, thank you, uh, Chief Baker, I did-o, Vice Mayor Nielsen, we do appreciate our, all our volunteer fire department, um, staff and I know it's not just those that are out on fire, but their families as well, they're all affected by it, so we appreciate all of them. So thank you for coming in tonight and hopefully we'll get you sooner than every couple of years, so.
Yes. I was just, kind of the wishes of the last night, and, you know, it's just, just do what the city manager tells me, so.
And if you can stick around a little bit, 'cause we do have questions about the purchase of the fire truck that's coming up on the next in the agenda, if that's okay. Um, you can have a seat for now and we'll call you up if we need you, and maybe we won't have any more questions for you, but we appreciate you sticking around. Alright, item number B, purchase of fire truck for the Holbrook Volunteer Fire Department. And so, um, we were given a tab in our agenda for our city council action item request, um, as Chief Baker just spoke of. He said the current fleet condition, it says our fire department currently operates with the following trucks, one fire truck at station three, two fire trucks at station two, and one fire truck at station McCaws Road with the corresponding years that are there. So the nineteen ninety-two truck at station two has experienced significant issues, including a water leak due to rusted fittings and barely passing pump tests. This, this situation underscores the urgent need for a reliable and fully functional fire truck. Uh, modernization and safety, the aging fleet, particularly the nineteen ninety-two and nineteen ninety-seven models, present reliability and safety concerns. New fire truck will enhance the safety of our firefighters and the efficiency of our emergency response. Re-enhanced capability, modern fire trucks come equipped with advanced technology and equipment allowing our firefighters to tackle a wider range of emergencies more effectively. This includes better handling of hazardous materials, high-rise building fires, and complex rescue operations. And fourth, community growth, as Holbrook continues to grow, the demands on our fire department increase. New fire truck will ensure that we are adequately prepared to meet the needs of our expanded community. So, um, the cost of a new purchase would be five hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, they have some alternatives, uh, but the recommendation, um, from the fire chief would be to purchase. With that, um, manager Jacobowski Walt, Walt, Waltz, sorry, I had it down, so, Jacobowski Waltz, do you have anything you wanna add to? I wanna see if that's, um, Councilwoman Pacheco? She didn't think she was gonna be able to, or do you want me to try to answer it, or is this the only way to answer it?
Yeah.
Holbrook City Council meeting.
Hi, my name is Anna Lopez and I'm calling.
Sorry, just had to make sure I wasn't Councilwoman Pacheco.
Well, that was rude.
I was a little first, anyways, alright, back to you.
No, I don't have anything to add, I think, um, Chief gave you the background information on the situation that he has to deal with in the fire department. Um, so I'll just leave it up to his expertise in that area.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we'll open up to a council discussion, um, did you have your hand up first?
I don't know, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I can just first.
This truck that you're getting, what is the year of this truck?
It's maybe this year.
Do you mind coming to the microphone so we can see on here?
It, this truck is a, is a stock truck, it's, look, so it's in production right now, and it's on a first come, first served basis. Other than, rather than buying a custom-built truck, which is two to three years out. So, right now, it's kind of reserved for us because we've accepted, or not accepted, but we've, we've taken a quote on it, so it's in production, it'll be, it'll be done in October of this year, so.
Okay, and then, down here it says, it's sold as-is basis.
Right.
And a one-year bumper-to-bumper warranty, so we have one-year warranty on a brand-new truck?
That's pretty standard to the industry.
Wow.
I have a question.
What's it, we'll have, uh, Councilman Dixon, then you.
Alright.
So then, Alex, this truck, is it gonna give you everything that you need to do your job?
Yes, yeah, I, we, I wouldn't have even looked at it if it wasn't one that met our needs.
Okay.
So.
And you said it's a stock truck, so what it, what is it?
A stock truck is, they build a few trucks every year just to have, have on hand to sell to departments. Most departments go out and they'll, they'll, uh, spec a truck and have a custom-built in their needs. And it's a little bit more expensive that way and the timeline is, you know, it's two, three years out that way. Whereas if we just buy one that they're building already, and it's, it's basically could be, just like the trucks we have, sixty thousand gallon tank.
So it, do you anticipate adding things to this once, once we get the truck?
No, other than the basic equipments, we're gonna pull as much off that we can as the old truck that we're replacing with, but there'll be a few things we'll have to buy
Okay.
just to update.
Sure, sure.
Up to date, so.
In, in reading, uh, your report from the last item, and it kind of goes into this item as well. Um, I don't like the fact that we have a nineteen ninety-two and a two, uh, nineteen ninety-seven truck. So I want this, I'd rather give you guys what you need. I mean, we've got the money and budget, correct, Randy?
Yes.
We've already budgeted for this, in fact, I think we budgeted last year for it.
Right.
And, and for some reason that we couldn't get the truck.
Yeah, it was, it was a manufacturing.
That was the expenditure limitation, too.
Yeah, it was a manufacturing.
Yeah, it wasn't a limitation on that, we'd, we'd approved that, and, yeah. Um, I want you to have what you need.
Right, a- and for now, this is gonna be what we need. I think long-range planning, me and my officers have, have got some long-range planning, capital expenditure stuff that we've gone over. And I can make a presentation on that to you guys in the future if you want to, or I can present it to the city manager and she can give it to you. However, we've, we've discussed a few things that we need to, to do in the next five to ten years.
Sure. This, this truck is paramount right now?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilwoman Pat?
Um, I was just looking at that bottom part about transportation, you could save ten thousand dollars if we send someone to Florida and they drive it back.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's currently the plan.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, but it has to be a C D L driver, so, I don't like, I don't know how many the city has, but we have two on the fire department, so as, as long as they're available to go get it, that's, that's the plan.
That's the plan?
Yeah.
So that is, so it would be five sixty-one?
Yes, yes. That five seventy-one includes them shipping it out here.
Okay.
So.
Alright, any other questions or comments?
I make a motion that we
One second, so, so I have a, just a question and concern, and this is to our manager, um, since you're new here. Um, my only concern is spending five hundred sixty, five hundred seventy thousand dollars right away, I wanna make sure our manager's had a chance to go through the budget thoroughly herself, to kind of check all the different departments, make sure there is not some gap we've missed
Right.
in some of the other departments and things like that, so, um, depending on how, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, um, but part of me is like, I would almost like to table it however I see that you've got a, the quote's only good till, what, two, two more days, a couple more days?
Two more days.
Yeah.
And so, so that would be my concern, tabling it. Um, but at the same time, I wanna make sure, hey, we didn't know that there was, like today we had a major water break.
Right.
Like, is there things that we need to take, you don't take care of there, because in the end, we make sure we have the water. So that's my only concern right now, is like, do we have time to table it, if we table it, do you think this estimate would still be good?
Um, I talked to the representative last week and he, he probably can extend it for a week.
Not much longer.
But not much longer than that, because if we don't take it, somebody else is going to, which doesn't mean we have to take it, I'm just saying, that's, that's cool, right?
We don't wanna leave you hanging, but at the same time, like I said, just, especially after this afternoon, it's like
I understand.
So Mayor, if, if I may, um, seven hundred thousand was put in the budget and it was adopted last, last meeting. So, with this, that's saving, uh, you know, we're saving a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we can then utilize somewhere else in the department by going this way. It's still savings that later on down in the year, if Sharon, we need to address something, we could come back to council and utilize those funds somewhere else.
Alright.
And my only observations over the last couple of weeks is, uh, really talking with the Streets part of the Public Works Department that I'm hearing, well, we need this piece of equipment to do this, we've got equipment that's been sitting in the yard that, A, was purchased, not being used, we've got other equipment that's old and we need extra equipment to, to do the things that we need to see to get the job done to beautify the city, that is one of your goals. Um, so as long as Randy's got some of those items in the budget, which I think he already does, um, that would be my only concern is is there something that's not in the budget in that equipment that Streets needs to get the job done? I know a dump truck, which is already in the budget, I know that, but, but other than major ones, as long as they're in the budget.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, and, no, I appreciate it, like I said, it's just my concern is it's a big purchase item right at the beginning of the budget year, so, but, yeah.
Uh, I understand, I, I think every department's kind of the same, though, so.
We are, and so, and that's the thing, we gotta start whittling away each big project, so, so we appreciate you coming, we really do.
Well, I
Um, well, one second, Councilman Dixon, anything you had to comment, then we'll come to you.
No, I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, one second, yeah.
Well, in regards to what you said, Mayor, I mean, we just had a meeting with all the public attending and telling us what they want in this town, and somehow you gotta come up with that money also. So, it, it's kind of what we gotta look at, the, the best bang for our buck, I guess, I mean, I'd, I'd love to say run out and buy this thing, but yet we've promised people in the community that, uh, we're gonna get on board and we're gonna start taking care of a lot of stuff that needs done and it, it's not in the budget. So, might be something
Mayor, I, I would ask, I guess if you said it was rusting, the, the, that, the reason you have the leak, is that something that can be repaired on?
Well, that's already been repaired, we're not gonna let, let, because that's one of our trucks that we stand on, so we repair the trucks as needed, as, as repairs are needed. So, everything that right now is repaired, but like I stated before, it's struggling to pump up to standard, up to the specifications, so.
And I have to add to that point, I think, um, too many times, too many small rural communities like us keep putting Band-Aids on things. And if we keep doing that, we're gonna be continually in the situation where if we just spend the money now, we won't be spending double it in a couple of years when prices are going up, I mean, you'd have to take that into consideration as far as that goes as well. I hear what, you know, you're saying about what we wanna do, um.
And we do have some money set aside for those as well, so, okay, I appreciate that, so, alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, we will open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion that we, uh, purchase this fire truck at the, in the amount of five hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Alright, appreciate that, so. Alright, moving on to item number C, ordinance twenty-four dash zero four, this will be a first reading of levying a primary property tax upon the assessed valuation of property located within the city, subject to taxation for the fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance, it said this is a first reading of it. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero four, an ordinance of the city of Holbrook, Arizona, levying a primary property tax upon the assessed valuation of property located within the city, subject to taxation for the fiscal year ending Ju- June twentieth, thirty, June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Whereas in two thousand nineteen, residents of the city of Holbrook passed a primary property tax. And whereas the city council has the authority to levy and collect taxes for the general expense of the city and all lawful municipal purposes for Holbrook City Charter, section six dash, six dot zero two A, and whereas a public hearing was held on July tenth, twenty twenty-four to discuss the budget. Whereas pursuant to state law, an ordinance levying taxes re- is required to be adopted no later than third Monday in August. Whereas Navajo County is the assessing and collecting authority for the city of Holbrook, now therefore be it ordained by the mayor and the council of the city of Holbrook. Section one there is hereby levied a rate of point four six eight six on each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation of all property located within the corporate limits of the city of Holbrook, except such property as may be exempt by law from taxation. A tax rate sufficient to raise the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand, eighteen dollars as required in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Section two, per state law, this ordinance shall become effective upon adoption. Section three, the city clerk is directed to transmit a certified copy of this ordinance to the county assessor and the Board of Supervisors of Navajo County, Arizona. So again, this is just our first reading today, so we will not be, uh, voting on it, however, um, Mr. Sullivan is here to answer any questions that somebody may have. Councilman Dixon and then Vice Mayor Nielsen, uh, so Mr. Sullivan, if you're open for some questions?
And this is actually less than this last year, correct?
Correct.
So last year was point four seven eight four?
Yes.
This coming is point four six eight six?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
It was the same question.
Okay.
I didn't hear you answer.
Great one.
Right, any other questions or concerns about it? Alright, hearing none, um, so at our next meeting, we will go ahead and have the second reading of the ordinance and we'll vote on it then. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for being here, we'll be ready for that. Item number D, the intergovernmental agreement regarding the Northeast Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy. Uh, we do have Chief Christiansen in the audience for us in case we have any questions as well. Um, I'll just read the action item request. Says the Holbrook Police Department benefits significantly from the current I G A with N A L E T A, which provides convenient local training for officers. This local training arrangement minimizes additional costs that would otherwise be incurred if training were conducted outside the area. And it goes through some of the costs of lodging and mills. Um, says by contrast, local training through, um, N A L E T A encourages minimal daily per diem costs as lodging and meal expenses are largely eliminated. So the financial implication would be the academy costs, um, so we can renew it or not. But, um, we'd like to invite Chief Christiansen up to the podium if you don't mind, and you can, uh, share a little bit about this agreement.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I haven't seen the actual agreement, but we have been using them for several years now. Um, it is the most economical academy in this area for us. As, there really is no per diem, the recruits take a lunch and eat lunch together at the academy. Um, they're provided a department vehicle to drive back and forth with them together, um, so we do incur the gas costs, but other than that, it's relatively inexpensive to what we are currently paying and what we paid to the Flagstaff Academy, um, this year.
Yes, Vice Mayor Nielsen?
So, this is physically located in Snowflake, right?
It is, yes.
So, that's thirty miles.
Yes.
So, what do, what is our cost to have this IGA with them? Do they charge us to serve them out?
I don't believe there's a cost, I don't believe there's, I don't believe there's a cost for.
We don't pay anything?
It's just what a cadet.
Just the cost for the academy?
Just the cost for the cadets. So, we pay, there's like a three hundred fifty dollar registration fee and then there's a, I think the class fee's like fifteen hundred dollars per cadet. So, we're looking at about two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars. Whereas, we sent two to Flagstaff this year and the cost per recruit was forty-three hundred and like fifty dollars. Plus, we have motel, which is averaging about five hundred a week and a hundred and fifty dollars a week in food. It is a twenty-one-week academy. She has four, one of the recruits got injured in that academy. He was removed from the academy after six weeks. The female is still there, her name is Sierra. She graduates in a month and she'll be here when she graduates.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, under section or paragraph three of the agreement, I know you don't have it in front of you, and it was the same as last year. It says law enforcement agencies participating in NALITA shall provide qualified instructors for all classes given at NALITA. Are, are we able to do that?
Due to manpower issues, we can't provide instructors. They requested a recruit training officer from us, but again, I have seven people, I can't, I can't give a recruit training officer because it's a full-time job.
Right.
So, we're not participating in that at this point because we can't. In the past, I know Holbrook did have instructors. When I was at the county, I was, I was an instructor there. So, it is local instructors, but we, we are not participating in that at this time.
Okay, good. I mean, that's one of the things that we're to buy, buy.
Right.
So, I'm wondering if we could get a caveat in, in that section to exempt us from that.
So, that's the, it's just a duplicate of the previous years and I believe if they haven't requested it, it's not that we're violating anything. It's just that we aren't able to provide that service, so, they, they haven't come back and said that we've not, you know, that we violated the contract.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanted to put a caveat in it, when staffing allows, we would provide, but I don't think it, they haven't, they haven't, I've been here for, what, almost six years now and we've been short-staffed pretty much, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of that time and we haven't been able to provide any instructors. Actually, I take that back, sorry. Lieutenant Kuhn goes over there and helps with felony, felony stops. So, we are still providing, sorry, I forgot about that.
Okay.
So, we are still providing.
And who, who's in charge, who's the person in charge over there?
His name is Chad Kruger. He was recently appointed after John Weisner retired last year. Chad retired from the sheriff's office and took that position through M P C.
Okay, right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Chief. So, all right, with that, we'll go ahead and open the floor for a motion. I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement regarding Northeastern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy.
Second.
First and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. All right, item number seven, summary of current events. Just a couple of quick little things. School is right around the corner. We're starting August first, so be careful as you're driving around. The next few weeks, you're going to have new kids on bikes and walking across crosswalks, things like that, so please be aware of them. Also, August seventeenth will be the Lurma softball tournament, so go ahead and save the date on the Saturday. And the night before, they're going to do a cruise, so watch for advertisements for more information about that. So, they're trying to make it a nice community event, not just a softball tournament, so they're doing a great job doing that, so. And that is all I have. Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Nothing to do, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Black?
I don't have anything to do.
Councilwoman Pack?
I was saw on Third Avenue that the weeds were getting cut, so that looked nice. I think there's a city worker out with a boombox and cutting weeds. So, kudos to the takes.
Back in the days. Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
I don't have anything.
Councilwoman Tafoya?
I don't have anything as well.
Thank you. All right, Manager Jacobowski Walt? Jacobowski Walt, I know, Jacobowski Walt, I got it.
So, the report that I have for you tonight is from the week of the eleventh July to the seventeenth. We did have, I had a request for a probation person. I don't know the exact name that I should be calling her, but she was supposed to come in and help with the weed abatement and she never showed. So, I contacted probation again to reiterate that we are in dire need of assistance. And she said she put that out again, we still haven't gotten anyone. I attended a real lazy board meeting, met a lot of people, I got some good information for the city. Met with the mayor, council members and public to discuss the vision for Hunt Park. That was a great, great meeting. We got a lot of constructive criticism and a lot of great ideas for Hunt Park. I sent introductory emails to council members and governmental partners and entities requesting one-on-one meetings. And I did meet with Will Flake, who is the Navajo County engineer, received contact information for, for the Public Works Director, so we can coordinate some activities here in the city. Met with Linda Corr from the Tribune, Michael Nielsen from Hay, Holbrook. I have Dr. Kay from the school district. We did a tour of facilities and discussed collaboration efforts between the district and the city. Also, had a meeting with the Men's Golf Association to discuss activities and events and how we can promote and make the golf course a better destination place. I am continuing research on various opportunities across the board and met with employees and department heads. Joe Jarvis from P and Z, also talking to him about code enforcement, and Steve from the golf course.
Fantastic, thank you very much. All right, item number nine, submission of written petition for items not on the agenda.
There are none.
Thank you. And item number ten, adjournment. What, motion? I make a motion to adjourn. Motion?
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, we'll close at six thirty-eight. We will go into a work session. We'll go ahead and say at six forty-five, we'll give everybody about seven minutes. And as the council, we'll go ahead and take our seats at the table to do our work session down there. Thank you, and thank you for everybody that's in attendance tonight. We appreciate you.